And welcome to the May 13th, 2025 meeting of the East Long Meadow Town Council. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence to reflect on the events going on both near and far. Thank you. In accordance with match general law, this meeting is being recorded by LCAT. If there's anyone else in the audience recording, if you could identify yourself. Seeing none, we can move on to public comments. This is an opportunity, if there's anyone in the public that wishes to make a comment about anything in particular. If you do have a comment about the budget, when we get to the budget public hearing, there will also be an opportunity for that as well.
Sorry Connor, I can't quite hear you.
Oh, sure. You could make a public comment now, but if it's related to the budget, there's also going to be an opportunity in a few minutes for those comments. Okay, seeing no general public comments, we'll move on to council comments. Let's see what other comments to see.
I just want to say thank you for getting to us in a timely fashion for the incident at that high school. It was nice to be kept up to date on, and I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, town manager report. Hi, Tom.
Good evening. How are you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good. So, attached are the construction reports for the weeks of April 14th, 21st, and 28th at the high school and the auditorium. I am still amazed about everything that happens every couple of weeks, every time these reports come out. And it's exciting how much, how far we've come in such a short period of time. At our last school building committee meeting, we learned about a potential issue involving water pressure for the fire protection system. So, we're, we may have to alter the design a little bit to figure out how to fit a pump for that system in the existing footprint. So, I'll keep you updated on that. For all intents and purposes, we're still on time and on budget. Rebecca, Rob and I met with Barrett Planning Group, who's going to help us do the zoning bylaw review and diagnostic. The infamous or famous chapter 450. So, we're really excited to dig into that. This project was made possible by our One Stop for Growth Grant from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So, we look forward to having a spirited conversation about all things zoning with Barrett Planning and most of you who will undoubtedly be asked for your input during the process. So, we look forward to that. Ryan Quimby and I met with Whip City Fiber last week for an update on our fiber project, fiber to the home project. We're still awaiting our poll applications from the utilities, make ready work estimates, things like that. But we still kind of continue to figure out how we're going to roll this whole process out. We've, we're analyzing multiple scenarios for constructibility costs and, and whatever those potential revenue streams might be. So, as you may remember, when we were talking about this probably last year, most of this depends on what the, the take rate, which is how many customers we expect to get. You know, if we based it on the votes of the poll question about fiber, almost 95% of the community would be on board, but we know that that's unrealistic. So, basically, we have set up a website now to, to show how interested communities are. So, we have the whole community set up in these fiber areas and we're asking people to get on the website. It's at eastlongmeadowma.gov backslash fiber. Is that slash or backslash? That's backslash, alright. Fiber. To put in your address and your name and just let us know that you're interested in this, this opportunity. Obviously, high-speed dependable fiber service to the home from your local municipal light plant. We're really excited about it, but again, we, we're just trying to help with the planning process here. We're still two years out from anybody having fiber in their home. I want to make sure that, it was stressed a lot that just by signing up doesn't mean there will be a truck or van in front of your house the next day. We're just trying to get the numbers together so we can figure out the best way to roll this out. So, I, I also mentioned a couple of months ago that the property at 70 Maple Street was accepted into the spring 2025 Technical Assistance to Brownstone's Municipal Assistant Program at UConn. So, during the period from January to a couple of weeks ago, I met with our student rep, Sophia Gagnon, and the project manager for UConn, Damian Sorrentino, sort of to collaborate and develop a comprehensive reuse plan for this site. That included a reuse assessment and evaluating potential redevelopment options based on environmental, economic, and community factors. Great experience. The Sophia was outstanding, took a lot of community input and sort of rolled out a full potential reuse of the site. The report is forthcoming in full PDF form, which I'll share with you at some point. In the, in the interim, I forwarded some renderings of what a reuse could be. Sort of a mixed use development on that site with some public areas and a gazebo. It was, it was pretty, pretty cool site. So, this, this report will, will be sort of packed into our grant application this fall for, for brownfields to clean up the whole site. So, we were excited about that and thanks again to everybody at, at UConn for, for their help. May 22nd, 11:30 a.m., join us at the Council on Aging for the East Long Meadow Boston Post Golden Kane Ceremony. The, the ceremony is an honor bestowed on the community's oldest resident. Our guest of honor is Filomena Minnie Miller, who turned 103 in April. So, yeah, feel free to come by the, the COA on May 22nd. So, that's one of our upcoming events, May 22nd, 11:30 at the COA. And then obviously, we'll have our Memorial Day Ceremony, May 26th at 11:00 a.m. at the flagpole at the East Long Meadow High School. And that's the report for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Tom.
Saving all time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I would entertain a motion at this time to move out of order to licensing matters and then return to public hearings.
So, moves.
Second.
Questions to the main executive? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are at licensing matters for the farmer's market permit application for Hardwick Winery at the farmer's market at 46 Maple Street from June 7th through August 30th. That's on Saturdays from 9:00 to 1:00. Would you mind providing an update on that process?
They've been working on this Hardwick, Hardwick Winery is going to be serving at the farmer's markets on Saturdays. And this is the first time the council will see a farmer's permit since we got the advisory from the ABCC. But first, the provider of the alcohol has to be certified as an agricultural event. And we have a representative here that can probably explain where they are in the process. They're very close, but just didn't make it for tonight's meeting.
Great. Would you mind coming forward? If you could just come up to the microphone, if you don't mind.
Sit, stand.
Never.
Sit. Be comfortable. Thank you. I feel like I'm in front of a judge. So, we've been working on the farmer's market since January. One of our recent people that we were talking to was the Hardwick Winery in Hardwick. And in order for them to participate in a farmer's market, the law was changed in December of last year so that there's a process that they have to go to in order for them to actually be able to come to the, the farmer's market. And it's, they have to receive certification as an agricultural event, actually the farmer's market, which isn't really them, but that is how the law is stated. So, it's a, an agency called EMDAR. And EMDAR will certify as an agricultural event if we have X amount of farms coming each week. And we absolutely do have many farms coming this year. We're really excited about that. And so, I expect to be certified. I was told that the application went in yesterday and somebody was contacted and they had a favorable result that it should be approved shortly, but not quick enough for tonight's meeting. So, we're moving forward. I just want to clarify one item. So, they're going to be selling bottles of wine. They're not going to be selling glasses of wine. They're going to be sampling, but they are not going to be selling, they will be selling bottles.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
So, the council will get a permit. Once they get the certification, that certification will be reflected on the permit that you see for the very first time. So, it'll be all new to us, but it seems like a pretty easy process.
Yeah, definitely a new process, but it seems like a cool idea. Thank you for providing the update for us.
Okay.
Any questions?
Sure. So, this isn't an actual pouring permit?
No, no. I, I think there's a separate thing for that. So, selling, it's new to me too.
Yeah.
Little licensing committee too. So, it's interesting that the provider has to have the event certified agricultural and not the host. Right.
So.
The Hardwick Winery's been through this before, I think.
So, is there any fee associated through the town for the permit?
No. I think the town is going to, well, there's two permits. So, there's the, the permit from the health department, which they will get. And that they will go through that process and then they will also pay a $50 fee for this alcohol permit. That is what the Massachusetts law.
Through Massachusetts.
Right, right. So, the licensing committee meeting.
Know where I'm going with this.
Yeah.
Fee schedule coming up, so.
So, Kathy, correct me if you'd like. We had a licensing committee meeting in December to talk about this, but we didn't have a quorum. But in our informal discussions, we agreed that there would be no permit fee attached to this.
Correct.
Sounds neat. Winery's happy with that.
Yeah, I'm excited. Like I said, it's something completely different.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah. We're, we're stretching our limits and we're, we're trying to bring in vendors that are going to bring in a lot of people. So, I think this year, we have really done ourselves, we really have so far. We have a lot of food vendors coming, so it's very exciting.
Yeah, sounds like a great event. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now back to public hearings. We have six o'clock public hearing for the budget. So, this is a public hearing to present the town manager's proposed capital improvement plan and operating budget for fiscal year 2026 to the public for their comments as outlined in Article 6, Section 1 of the East Long Meadow Home Rule Charter. The council members are Jim Leiden, Kathy Hill, Anna Jones, myself, Connor O'Shea, Marilyn Richards, Ralph Page, and John Torscha. And I would ask the clerk to read the legal notice into the record.
The East Long Meadow Town Council hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing on May 13th, 2025, 6:00 p.m. in the Council on Aging media room, 328 North Main Street, and via Zoom webinar to review the proposed FY26 capital improvement plan and operating budget as outlined by Article 6, Section 1 of the East Long Meadow Home Rule Charter. The proposed FY26 capital improvement plan and operating budget can be reviewed in the clerk's office or on the town's website under Government Town Manager. For the town council, Jeanne R. Quagletting, Town Clerk of the Council.
Thank you, Jeannie. Then at this time, I would ask if our Chair of the Financial Oversight Committee wanted to make any comments or presentation?
Hey, Jim.
Hello.
Evening.
Good evening. So, the Financial Oversight Committee met during the month of April and we submitted our recommendation to the town council last week. I don't know if you would like to read that letter of recommendation or if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. But basically, we recommended that the town council approve the town manager's budget as it was submitted. We felt that the budgets were reasonably constructed, that there was due diligence applied and that the hard work was done by the town manager and the budgeters and the school committee and, and the school department. So, that, you know, we, we thought that it was, it was done well and correctly, especially considering the issues that we face and with the debt and interest coming on board with the new high school, which will be kind of lumping in, in FY26. The only thing that we suggested is that possibly looking into getting some kind of outside resource to look into some way of helping us deal with the issue of health insurance, employee benefits, retirement contributions, because that category is continuing to rise. It rose almost 10% this year and it's going to squeeze us out. So, that's an area that, that there's some way we can find to help start to push that down a little bit. I think it would be to the town's benefit. But everyone was very cooperative, the members of the committee, Don Starks, the Vice Chair, Richard Carroll, Anna Jones, and Kathy Hill, Connor O'Shea is ex officio. We were also very fortunate to have Ralph Page and Marilyn Richards as very regular attendees at our meetings. So, it was well attended and Tom and I can't, I can't believe I can't. They were there each, each meeting and that went a long way towards helping us understand how the budgets were put together. So, and we had one meeting that we, we went over with, with the school committee, Gordon and Pam, and helped us to understand their budget as well. So, we felt that really the hard work was done prior to the budget being submitted as, as it's supposed to have been done. And we didn't recommend any changes.
Great. Thank you for the update, Jim. Tom, at this point, would you mind providing a brief summary or especially since there were some changes over the last?
Sure. Yeah, I guess I want to thank the Financial Oversight Committee Chair and the entire committee. The conversations are always helpful. You know, saying that we didn't have any recommendations to change the budget doesn't mean that there were many comments and meaningful conversations to sort of push us ahead in the next year and the year after that. So, I do want to thank you all for your time because I think you provide sort of an invaluable service to the whole community, not just the budget process, but I mean, as we move forward, the, the expertise and the comments really sort of lend this team effort. And, and I do appreciate all your time. So, thank you. Yeah, so we is a relatively quick process for financial oversight. And yes, a lot of the work was done, but like Jim had sort of alluded to, a lot of the space that we had to grow was eaten up by a few line items that sort of limited how much we could spend without digging into our excess levy. So, that sort of left us with a semi-level services budget that we sort of had to cut down at, at our level one meetings. The school department obviously had to make significant cuts to their original budget submittal. And so, we ended up, you know, in a, in a position that, that, you know, I guess couldn't have been any more comfortable, I suppose. We, we were able to not tax up to the levy limit once again, which has historically been a priority for this community, which I'm happy to say we didn't, we didn't do that again. There was quite a few large increases, again, health insurance, property and casualty insurance and retirement, which we, we've seen major increases to across the board. We, the, the budget sort of still in flux a little bit with the, the state kind of reissuing and issuing their numbers in their normal schedule. We ended up, like Jim said, we ended up with a tax rate of 1985, which a dollar eighty-seven of that is attributed to, they excluded that from the new high school, which left us somewhere around 1795 for, for the tax rate without the excluded debt. We had two and a half percent increase in the school. We had a 2.26%, 2.26% increase across the rest of the town departments. And then the rest of that increase came from the, the aforementioned big three there. The capital plan was a little bit lighter than last year, especially. There was a one and a half million dollars of general fund liability for the capital plan. And then with the enterprise fund projects, we had about three and a half million dollars worth of projects this year between the enterprise funds and some other projects from, from grant funds. So, like I said, we did, we did quite a bit last year. This year didn't quite measure up. But again, we have this situation that we're in where we were dealing with some, some monumental increases as well as the excluded debt from the high school, which doesn't necessarily hit us in the operating budget, but it hits us where it counts and that's the tax rate and how much of an impact that's going to be on the community. So, we were very, very conservative what with our level service budget this year. Again, we didn't budget the number for level service, but I don't anticipate any of our services being hindered by those cost savings. There was a few changes that came out of our conversations from, from the financial oversight that netted us about $4,000 worth of savings. There was a, let me make sure I get everything right here. We had a operational change with a shared position happened in the last month or so. So, we've sort of, because we've had the time here to, to let that happen before the budget hearing started. Recreation budget was decreased about 27,000. They share a position with IT. That eight of those 18 hours were transferred to IT, so their budget went up 21,000. And then accounting had a new hire of a position that's been open for quite some time. And we adjusted that budget by $1,700 for a COLA that will come on July 1st, contractually obligated by the, the CBA. So, that was about $4,224 decrease from the original budget submittal that that has been rolled into the excess levy. And then, like I said, there, the, the recap was updated and I sent you guys the updated recap to, to sort of reflect where the budget has moved between the House and Senate for the Commonwealth. And that represented a net increase of around $88,000, which was rolled into the excess levy in this, in this iteration as well. We also, based on some conversations we had at Financial, Financial Oversight, have sort of reworked the increase in the stormwater budget to reflect more of a percent increase across all categories instead of a flat dollar amount that I guess didn't really make as much sense as increasing everybody at the same rate. And that, that's pretty much it. Obviously, we'll have, I'm sure, many questions, which Kim's here, Rebecca's here. We're, we're more than prepared to answer any, any other questions on the budget.
Great. Thank you, Tom. At this time, since it is a public hearing, there's the opportunity for any members of the public to make a comment if they wish. If you want to come forward and state your name and address. Yes.
My name is Ralph Muller. I've been a resident of town for well over 60 years. And if you guys understand any of that, you're fantastic.
I have a script. I don't need that.
I'm in good shape. Anyway, I was here one year ago to protest the 2025 budget. Not protest it, but to find some questions on it. And, and my biggest question, I guess, is the 2025 budget had a huge sum of money allocated for paving. And the money was going to be from Dearborn Street, perhaps, the four corners. What happened? No paving? Where did money go?
Sure. I mean, I can ask. To clarify, yeah, so the, the money was for design. So, the, that wasn't actually to do the project. So, we have, and last year must have been for phase two. So, the phase one is coming in FY27. So, we, the state has offered us a grant to do the project for the construction cost. The town has to put up the design money, which was about $500,000. So, this project that, this was for phase two, which is probably going to be in like 2032, something like that. But so, so we're, it's, I know, I, it sounds, yes. So, but the investment is we pay, so we did this about four years ago and we're finally going to see that come in about a year or so at, on North Main Street. The, the, the outline of the grant program, the tip program, is the town puts up the design money and the state and the feds pay for the entire project, which out here is going to be about $16 million. So, it's a half a million dollar investment for a $16 million project. So.
It's a long way.
It is a long way. Yep, and.
The feds may stop that, mate. We may never see it.
So, that is certainly a real possibility, I suppose. Well, correct, but we won't be in design for that until we get on that full list. And if that money is removed, then we won't do the project. Because we can't, we can't afford a $20 million order or a project like that.
Surely can't.
Yeah.
But who's to get chapter 90, 90 money? What happened to that?
We still do, right around that same amount of money, about a half a million dollars a year.
But what did we do with it last year? I mean, Ridge Road? That's all I got paid was Ridge Road?
Yeah, so the, the, because of the price of paving these days, we end up stacking up two years of chapter 90 money to do a single project.
And that was Ridge Road.
So, last year, yeah, because we, we had done the Water Main, Ridge and E Circle. Yep.
What about our intersections? I just got an estimate that puts struts on my car, over $1,100.
So, you feel the pain?
No, that's right. I mean, you probably don't all drive Cadillac, so you know how bad the roads are here in East Long Meadow and they're only going to get worse.
Yep.
Just drive over the line in the summers and it's like glass almost, you know? Anyway, I, I understand. It takes time, but I don't know. I gotta see some, the center and the, and the four corners. It's just a disaster.
Yep. And that intersection was in the Transportation Bond Bill in 21, which was never funded. I think it was in this one, which I will see if it gets funded.
Didn't Biden give us a lot of money for infrastructure?
Well, I suppose in the form of the ARPA money, which we spent on a lot of capital projects. And that was what I was referring to last year, that we, we spent a lot of that money on projects last year.
Alright.
And I would add a lot of that money for the ARPA funds. Not all of it, but a lot of it went to like the water and sewer infrastructure projects too, which we kind of have to do before we pave a brand new road over.
So, a quick point, I know you didn't touch on it, but I believe it's this year that the state will be paving Route 83 from the Connecticut Line to the Rotary and also Prospect Street from the Connecticut Line to the Rotary. I believe it's on this year's agenda.
This year?
This year. So, although.
This summer, this fall, right now, pretty soon.
So, although, although usually a project like a tip project takes five, six years from engineering, applying for the grant and going through the whole process. In this case, it, it should be done within the year. Received notice and it was put onto the schedule, so.
And the, and the budget.
Hopefully, we'll start seeing a lot of paving in town.
The chapter 90 budget, budget is proposed to be increased this year in this budget. But again, we'll have to wait to see where the proposed. we, we'll have to wait to see where the proposed budget lands, but that was to the tune of an extra. Yeah. And, uh, yeah, it'll be almost fifty percent more. So we should be, we'll, we'll, I think this is a problem that is statewide, and I think they've been trying to do something about it, that, that chapter ninety formula basically has been untouched since two thousand and three, which obviously prices have changed a lot since then. So there is an effort, uh, across the, across the Commonwealth, uh, from municipalities to special interest groups to, to start to increase that money. Cause everybody's sort of in the same boat here that the money that we're getting does not go very far. And everybody's roads are, are in, in a similar condition.
All right. Well, Tom, I'm, I'm glad, uh, I got some answers. There's going to be some paving done. It makes me a happy guy. Couple more questions. A loader. Does, does the town need a new loader?
We do.
Really? For all that money? You gotta have that, gotta have that loader.
It's used a lot.
Well, I realize that, but the one you got is out of service or beyond that repair.
We, we have to, we have to rent one for the winter to load salt.
Well, we don't want to do that. But the leases on the fire truck and the ambulance, are those, when those leases are up, is the town going to get a new ambulance? Are they going to keep the ambulance for a couple of years?
Well, the way things are working out, we pay for them before we even get them. Uh, the, there's such a backlog. This is payment three on this ambulance and we don't have it yet. So when we get it, what's already going to be paid for? It's, it's sort of a, a difficult thing, but I think we should see in the next year or so that we're not going to need to buy another ambulance. Uh, you can imagine how quickly our public, uh, safety vehicles, police and fire.
Oh, I know. I realize.
How quickly they, they go. But, um.
Yeah. With maintain, maintenance, I might, you know, like anything, any car can last a while. I'm twenty-two years old. I love it. Anyhow, um, Spade, Oregon culvert. I live right there.
Okay.
I know that culvert. Water goes right through it. Fine.
Okay.
Eight hundred seventy-four thousand dollars.
That's right.
Could pave with that money.
We could.
That's a grant.
That's a grant. That's on our grant. That's on our grant, that municipal vulnerable preparedness grant. So that, uh, the state has also been doing a, a, they've had sort of an initiative lately to inspect these culverts, uh, and if there's any, uh, you know, structural damage that they need to be.
They must have.
Be repaired. Well, they did. And when you go in there, any cracks in the concrete, we had just, we just did a project on, uh, the culvert on Porter Road. Uh, same thing. Uh, it, it may not seem like much when you look at the pictures, but there's cars driving over that every day, right? So we got to make sure that we're not having any road collapse. The other one with that, that makes it, uh, makes it so difficult is that there's a sewer line right underneath that culvert. And so if there's any, uh, any more deflection in that pipe, then we got a sewer problem too. So that was put on the list and sort of fast tracked through the grant.
All right. Thank you. I bothered you enough.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah, see you in the, the next day. Thank you, sir.
I wish there was more.
Yeah.
We need an auditorium for.
Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a public comment related to the budget? Hey, seeing none, I will close the public input portion of this meeting. It's now an opportunity for the council, if there's any council comments or questions about the budget. I'll start with the only one that I have is also thank you to the members of the financial oversight committee, and of course, all the town and school department heads. They've put in a lot of time and effort preparing the budget and reviewing it with multiple rounds of people. No short amount of work, but it seems to have paid off. Any other comments? Ralph?
Thank you. Um, I'm going to start with capital. Um, through the fire department, they're requesting a two thousand and fourteen car, uh, hybrid outfit. I know we have, um, designation of green communities. Uh, does that fall under, um, the green communities to where we're going to apply for a grant so that hopefully we receive a grant from green communities so that we don't have to raise and appropriate the money?
Have you had that conversation with Chris yet? I know you were talking to Mark about his, but.
Yeah. Um, I might.
Sorry. Yeah. Thank you.
Um, so the hybrid vehicles were, um, available for, um, incentives through green communities in this, this past year's pond. It's like the, um, the blanket combies, um, purchasing agreement that they put out. And we were not, um, qualified for the last round of grant money because we have an active grant with them, uh, that just completed the work on the DPW service station. So now, um, they're going to reissue a new pond for the fall into the next two or three years. Um, and it's not clear if hybrids are going to be fundable, green communities moving forward. Um, they may only be funding electric vehicles, but they are having listening sessions presently. Um, and so, uh, there's an opportunity for communities to weigh in and say, we would like for hybrids to continue to be funded. I pulled a lot of information together from both the police department and the, um, fire department and was ready to submit for those hybrids. Um, and they said that we were, uh, not able to because of the, uh, open grant that we have for the service station.
So typically when we approve, uh, capital projects, we don't get, uh, sent out, um, purchased usually for extremely long times sometimes. Um, is there any possibility, uh, if we do put it in, that this be switched over from a hybrid to an electric vehicle? If that's something, I'm not sure exactly, uh.
Yeah, we have.
This is.
Yeah. So.
Our fire department, I'm assuming is to go around for inspections and, uh, stuff like that.
Right. And so, uh, we'd have to figure out the charger and all that stuff, but, uh, we'd have to talk operationally. Well, yeah, right. Uh, was that a satellite station at the library? I like that.
Maybe the full time soon.
Yeah, no, I think, I think, uh.
I just, I'd like to see us use. Um, available grants whenever possible. Instead of basically raising and appropriating.
And, and just to be very clear, so, um, for hybrids, the state was offering, um, three thousand dollars for any leases and up to five thousand dollars on purchases, which in relation to the cost of even a hybrid charger or, you know, some of these vehicles is, is just, you know, i- it's a small amount that takes some of the ouch out of it, but it's not a significant amount.
So I know when we went through the grant application program, um, we were shown multiple communities with electric vehicles that the entire cost was covered.
Electric vehicles probably have, like, fully electric vehicles probably have a different, uh, incentive and, uh, reimbursement rate, but I wasn't looking at that because we were, um, entertaining the hybrids.
I mean, and that was one of the reasons we went through to green communities. And again, don't want to beat a dead horse. I just want to use as many grants as we possibly can.
Yeah, I think if there's an opportunity to purchase this vehicle through a grant, we, we can, we'll explore that and we will.
And just on the same topic, um, of capital projects and grant funds, the, um, under IT department, the, um, building automation was also something that was considered to be, um, green communities eligible if we were in like good standing and closed out our projects for this year, but we, that was our designation project. And so we just, we were late getting it going because of, uh, Bailey's departure. And so we're, uh.
That's all, is that fully closed out now?
It's not fully closed out because we have, um, part of the project was funded through the federal government and they have different, um, reporting requirements. And so, um, we have to certify payroll. And one, one of the vendors that we're using was a subcontractor that was unfamiliar with that system. So we're waiting to, um, certify that payroll.
That's right. Thank you.
Nothing's ever easy.
No. Even grant funds.
Thank you for that.
Thanks, Rebecca. Thank you.
Rebecca.
Thanks.
Chapter ninety, it looks like, uh, an increase from five hundred and seventy-three thousand in twenty-five to nine hundred and two thousand.
Yeah.
We know if that's just for this year, uh, that they're bumping it up or is it's a new, um, way of calculating so that going forwards, we can pretty much be assured nine hundred thousand.
So they, when they sent the letter out this year, they used the, so it was typically two hundred thousand a year spread out to the communities using that formula. This year's budget, uh, presentation from the governor has three hundred million, two hundred of which were used by, in the normal fashion. And then they only, the other hundred million, I think it was a five-year plan or something. So this is the letter we got based on that allocation, whether that's in the final budget or not. Uh, that remains to be seen. That would be nice. That would be the, the, the budget presentation was five years at three hundred million. So that would be a, a great commitment from the Commonwealth if instead of two hundred thousand to go around every year, it was three hundred thousand for the next five years. Again, uh, you don't want to, you know, punch a gift horse in the mouth. It's, it's, you know, it's something.
Just hard to plan, um, especially for projects. I mean, nine hundred thousand, that may fill in most of our potholes in town. Uh, uh, really, when you start to look at the cost of paving a street.
Yep.
It doesn't go very far. Um, but again, at least it's something which is good to see. Of course, Mr. Butler took all of my thoughts away here.
You're hired.
And I know, um, under the stormwater enterprise fund, we've adjusted from a flat increase to a percentage. Do we know what percentage?
Four.
It was four percent.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so as I looked at the numbers and as I stated at the financial oversight, the twenty twenty-five actual as compared to the twenty twenty-six is only an increase of a couple thousand dollars. Obviously, if we went up four percent, it's going to be a lot more than that. So do we actually have the twenty twenty-five actual numbers?
And not.
What was printed? Because obviously there, there's a big discrepancy.
So I'm going to, Kim, you there? I'm going to, Kim and Bruce, uh, and Olga worked on this very extensively, uh, also with our, um, with our auditor for our financial statement, because this is a comment that happens a lot, um, or has been getting better, but, uh, the, the accounts were not accountinged well. So, uh, because of revenue and collections, it's kind of like the conversation we're having with the ambulance fund about not being able to appropriate what we, uh, more than the balance in the account. We're saying we're going to use this much and we're going to collect this much, but the actual revenue doesn't hit that number, which is, in accounting terms, not a great thing. And so, hi, Kim.
Hi.
I, I'm going to, I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to tag you in on the stormwater conversation because I know it's your favorite subject and you've worked so much on it.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
So before we really get.
Hold on a sec.
Twenty twenty-five actual.
Yep.
So I interpret that to mean that these are the actual numbers coming into the town that we know a hundred percent that they're true and accurate.
Revenue or expense?
Either. Uh, uh, either. I mean, to me, when you say this is the actual number, that's either what you've spent or what you've brought in, not with the injection.
Well, build or, so I'm going to let, I'm just going to let Kim run you through it because there, there's a whole. Go ahead, Kim.
She knew what was coming.
Okay. So going back, uh, since to when I started, so two years ago, looking at fiscal twenty-three, fiscal twenty-four, fiscal twenty-five, we started out estimating all of our usage back in twenty-three and, and, you know, historically, all of our usages were just estimated way too high. We weren't even billing out what we were saying we were going to bring in for revenue. So on a regular basis, we were in a revenue, revenue deficit every single year. The good part was that we had plenty of retained earnings and we were underspending our expense budget. So you know, we weren't having, we weren't getting this big hit to our retained earnings. We just weren't bringing in what we were saying we'd bring in. And, you know, I've, I've been to some trainings recently. It's not something that is not happening in other towns. I think it's been going on kind of a, across the, uh, across the state. So what we started to do when I first got there in fiscal twenty-three is we started reducing those estimates and increasing our rates so that we could kind of close that gap. And, and I can't remember, I don't have the numbers in front of me. Um, I think I did send them in an email to everybody kind of showing, like, if you look at what we budgeted versus what we billed versus what we collected, there were almost two hundred thousand dollar swings, a hundred thousand dollar swings. We've really closed that up for fiscal twenty-five, but we still, um, are not collecting what we are actually billing. You know, say we're collecting at a ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent. That means we're still in a revenue deficit. So I think twenty-five is going to look much, much better, but for twenty-six, the stormwater, we left the revenue pretty much, um, stagnant and we increased the rates a little bit so that we could close that gap even further because there's still a gap in the stormwater fund. You know, like the other, if you look at the other ones, we can just take, you know, if you look at water and sewer, we can just take our estimate, multiply it by a rate and we can come up with revenue. Stormwater is a little different because there's so many different fees within it that it's kind of difficult to estimate perfectly. So in order to prevent this from happening again in twenty-six, we just left the revenue flat, but then increased all the rates as a percentage so that it was, um, equal kind of across the board.
So, so, so our anticipated revenue is not our budgeted revenue. Does that make sense?
Well, I'm assuming we're anticipating, hey, there's going to be this many fees. This is how much is coming in. Um, that's our anticipation. That's why we budget for it. What's actually happening then is whether people aren't paying the fee or we're not being able to collect it or whatever, it drops. So, and I guess that's my question. Let's say twenty twenty-four actual, um, storm waters, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, two fifty-five. Do we go back and say, hey, this is what we actually collected in revenue for that year and that's that number? Or is that still the number that we projected that we were going to collect, even though we never did?
Did you hear that?
So are you looking, uh, what are you looking at? Are you looking at the article?
Recap summary estimated twenty twenty-six. Um, it's highlighted in green, um, enterprise, uh, for appropriate budgets, stormwater, you come across twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, those are all under actual. And then you have the estimates for twenty twenty-six. I guess my question is, is when we get to the actual for the next year's budget, is that actually what we've collected in revenue? Or is, was that still the projection from the year before?
Um, if.
Falling short. So.
Right. So if you're, I think what you're looking at is the actual, um, in the budget presentation, it showed the budgets from twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and then our estimated for twenty-six. I believe those are budgeted amounts. When I sent all of the changes that we had made to the budget, there was a section in that email that took those budgeted amounts and then said, this is what we actually billed. This is what we actually collected. So I don't, I don't know if that's available to you.
Probably in one of the hundred emails.
But if you look at, I believe what you're looking at are budgeted amounts, comparing budgets from year to year to year. But if you actually look at what was billed out and then what was collected versus those budget amounts, there's, there's pretty big differences over historically.
Well, I guess that's part of my concern is if there are those differences. I mean, I know in the stormwater, that's the newest account. But is that also happening, whether it be, you know, the ambulance fund, um, all the different enterprise funds?
So these are all.
Projecting this, but it's not.
Because we're not collecting it, so we don't really actually have the revenue. So what, it, the, the difficult part about this is because of how we bill, if you don't pay your water bill, you also don't pay your sewer bill and you don't pay your stormwater bill because they're all in the same bill. And that kind of gets lost in a two million dollar water budget, but not. And that kind of gets lost in a two million dollar water budget, but not in a four hundred thousand dollar stormwater budget. So if you're collecting at ninety-seven percent, that difference is huge in the stormwater budget because it's so small and so new, right?
And so are we aggressively trying to collect back, uh?
Yes, and we end up getting this money, just not in FY twenty-six.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Uh, when, when a lien is put on and then the bill gets paid and it just ends up as other revenue in some other year to come. Um, and so we're trying to close these gaps like Kim's saying from an accounting standpoint, right? But stormwaters or water and sewer is easy to multiply out and stormwater, it's always changing because new houses are being built and impervious areas increasing. And so we, the numbers are, are forever sort of changing on a weird scale. And that minor offset is just, it just shows up way more on the four hundred thousand dollar budget as opposed to the water and sewer budgets. And that was still our only comment on the financial statement? Which I have to sign, by the way, sorry.
What do you mean?
No, I mean, that's really our only comment from the state. Sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And our financial statements, the only comment that we have is is that if you compare what we budget versus what we bill and what we collect, there's pretty large discrepancies. And it's, we've had that comment for the past two years. And like I said, if you've looked at those numbers from twenty-three, there was like a two hundred thousand dollar swing. Now we might be close to a five thousand dollar swing. So over the past couple of years, we've been closing the gap and we're just continuing to do that in twenty-six.
Okay. Well, is there any reason we don't have any fuel for our ambulance?
Any fuel?
Just going across, it says fuel. Nothing in twenty-two, nothing in twenty-three, thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-four, nothing in twenty-five. I know we use them.
Let me look at ambulance, hold on.
Just choose not to break it out like this.
Awesome, yeah.
I was very impressed on the fuel economy.
Are you looking at a detailed budget for ambulance?
No, the recap summary, the revised one you sent over with, with the revisions.
Oh, the recap summary, hold on.
I'm sure that's all it is.
Oh, no, all, all that would have been, would have been an addition to the budget in a previous year. It just shows up. So like, see how it says retro, a hundred and ten thousand, those would have been additions to the budget that would have been votes. So they just show up separately. So that year might have been, they were short fuel, so they added thirteen thousand.
Very detailed, okay.
Yeah.
I can close that up in the future, so we don't have to see that.
Yeah, see? You just keep getting leaner and meaner.
I'll let anyone else jump in. I'm sure there's hundreds of questions. It was a long budget.
Any other questions? Okay, there's nothing else, then I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing. I think just for clarity, when we're continuing it, we have to say when we're continuing it too.
I move to continue the public hearing to review the FY twenty-six capital improvement plan and operating budget to May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five at six P M.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will continue and wrap up the budget with the eighteen or so motion on May twenty-seven.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you again. All right, yeah. She was not dismissed. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. We'll have all those motions done in short order so that uh, maybe even before the whole, uh, agenda package comes out, maybe try, try to, you know, early or middle um, next week so that if there's any, uh, questions and or concerns.
So in our, uh, original, our original, uh, budget packet, um, capital, I didn't see, uh, a five-year plan. I just saw all the items for this year.
Okay.
That, and I think it's basically because it was a draft plan, um, I'm assuming. So.
Yep.
Assuming going forwards, we're gonna get all of that.
Yep. Extra reading for me, thank you. You're welcome. I know you like it.
So now we have our six fifteen public hearing. This is a public hearing for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment relating to massage therapist facilities and a required second reading. The council members are Jim Leiden, Kathy Hill, Anna Jones, myself, Connor O'Shea, Marilyn Richards, Ralph Page, and John Torscha. And I would ask the clerk to read the legal notice into the record.
East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on May thirteen, twenty twenty-five at six fifteen P M. In the media room of the Council on Aging located at three twenty-eight North Main Street for a second reading of proposed amendments to the town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaws to delete subsection dash eight point nine massage therapist facilities. Amend table three dash one, schedule of the regulations, the East Long Meadow zoning bylaw to allow for the use category massage therapist facility or licensed massage therapy salon allowed by right in the commercial business, industrial, and mixed-use village zoning districts. The public hearing may also be attended via Zoom webinar for the council. Jeanne R. Proctor, the town clerk with the council.
Thank you, Jeannie. Then as the second reading, it's very short under article eight, special permits, it strikes section four fifty-eight point nine massage therapist facilities in its entirety. Therefore, renames section four fifty dash eight point ten to eight point nine. And then under the table of uses, move on number eight, massage therapist facility or licensed massage therapy salon. It removes under standards and conditions, see article eight and section four fifty dash eight point nine. And it changes commercial, business, industrial, and mixed-use village from special permit to yes. Right. And at this time, our director of planning is, if you want to give us a brief overview from the planning board.
Yeah, sure. So, I mean, the amendments are pretty self-explanatory. Um, the planning board is loo- looking to move away from the special permit oversight requirement for massage therapists salons and for those who want to practice massage therapist as a solo practitioner. Uh, so the amount of licensing that is needed from the state is, uh, rigorous enough to where these organizations are being vetted out before they get to the planning board. Uh, so every massage therapist needs their own individual license from the state in order to practice in Massachusetts. And when they open a business, which usually would happen after the planning board's special permit approval for the, uh, establishment itself, and that's called a massage therapist establishment license. So they're holding two separate licenses in order to conduct their business in town. And the planning board felt that, uh, it was cumbersome to these applicants to, to moving forward. So that's why they decided to switch it from special permit in those districts where it's allowed to just by right. Because the amount of licensing and overview from the state is already good enough in their opinion. So that's pretty much it. I mean, there wasn't much more besides that. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have on this.
Great. Thank you for the overview, Rob. Then it is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to make a comment related to this matter. Okay, I see no one online or in person, so I will close the public input portion of the public hearing. Is there any council comments?
So my only concern, um, on this is that actually we've had an incident in town in the past. That's the reason this was put under special permit. At that time, they needed a license from the state. Didn't work. Um, they had their license, they were bringing people in from New York and everywhere else. Um, they had fake IDs. Um, there was an entire gambit. And so we felt at that time the town itself had no way to shut down a business because they weren't required to have a special permit. Um, obviously, we went through the state, we went through the DA's office. Um, and it took quite a while to actually build a case and all in order to close it down. So that's the background on this. With that being said, um, I do understand how cumbersome it is, especially individual massage therapists. It, it's one of those balancing acts. You hope the situation never happens again. But with that being said, I just wanna make sure the town's protected that if something does happen, we are able to get in there and close the business down. I don't know how anyone else feels, um, especially knowing a different background and stuff.
I could see why historically it may have been there to help with a situation like that. But personally, I would hate to see us keep it be so cumbersome for everyone else that's been doing a above board and legal operation just for the one or two bad actors that may have been there. And although it's maybe a cumbersome process without a special permit through other legal routes of doing it, I do think that upholds a higher standard of due process than the town just willy-nilly revoking someone's special permit because we think they're doing something without a whole lot of evidence to the contrary. That's my thought.
Through the chair?
Sure.
Um, I kind of watched that process play out, um, in investigating these, some of these, uh, places that were ill-begotten. And it is a very, very, very cumbersome process from a law enforcement perspective. Um, just the amount of, um, applications you have to write just to get a search warrant, the approval to do surveillance. There's a pages of work and potentially years long worth of work, um, to get to the point of making an arrest. One of the problems I saw, I'm not sure if it was here in East Long Meadow, definitely surrounding the community where I'm not sure what their requirements were, but some of these establishments were open days, within days of law enforcement arresting the individuals. So let alone the due process a- aspect of it criminally. Um, but I would hate to give up the local control over potential situations like this and being reliant on Boston and trying to help us to shut something down. Uh, if we currently have it, and I'm reading what's supposed to be deleted here. Doesn't really look that, I'm, I'm sure it's a little cumbersome. Doesn't look that cumbersome to be able to retain that ability to, um, potentially shut somebody down where there's a public safety issue. Uh, so that's just, I guess, my thought.
I think the cumbersome piece is, um, not so much the special permit, but the redundancy, the process. You know, advertising, it takes so many weeks. I mean, someone wants to set up as soon as possible and they have to wait. So that's something that perhaps we should also take into consideration. It's an inconvenience, yes, but now maybe, maybe the protection outweighs the inconvenience.
Chair, do we happen to know what the state has done that's changed in the last ten or fifteen years since we originally put this into place? Either if it has been, you know, really more significant than maybe some of those things are being caught at the state level if it's being enforced differently or the process of actually getting the license reformed in a significant way. I don't know if there's. Now, what's changed at the state level?
Yeah, there really haven't.
And then, then I would, I kind of understand perhaps keeping it in place, but I'd love to know more of if, you know, if the state has really done a lot more to this effect.
Yeah, offhand, I'm not, I'm not sure if any of the state regulations have changed or what they've changed to or from.
Through the chair.
Sure.
So, you know, I'm looking at this and what I'm thinking is basically a salon that offers, you know, multiple therapists and all, have the salon get the special permit. And not necessarily each individual masseuse that works within that salon. But again, I don't know how, um, I don't know how they set up. I don't know if, um, you know, the massage therapist is just renting a space within the salon and they're their own entity. I don't know how that works. Um, I, and I do understand this coming in, having to get their own special permit is that's very cumbersome and I'm sure it's very annoying to them. Um, I mean, my thought was like if you did hair salons or, you know, the massage therapy salon, so the salon has to get it but not each individual person working within it. I don't know if that's something that the planning board had looked at or thought about or.
Yeah. So I haven't been aware of any change from the state level for licensing. I'm sure it's just the same as it was back then. But in terms of the business owners getting the special permit, uh, usually that's how it's done. So the special permit goes to the business, but the business could range in size. It could be a business owner and then four staff or just a solo practitioner who is also the business owner. In order to do any sort of massage therapy at a location, you need an establishment license for business. So no matter what, if there is a massage therapist business anywhere in town, they need both those licenses, no matter what. The owner as well as the practitioner's license for the owner. And then all the staff that they hire just need the practitioner's licenses. So the license to even do massage therapy. So there's two different licenses at play. Um, usually from what I've seen, um, people get the establishment license after they get the town approval. So they have to wait the three to four weeks to get the special permit. Then afterwards, you have to go to the state. Then the state grants them the establishment license. That's kind of the process that I already see at the moment. Um, for hair salons, nail salons, uh, any sort of salon barber shop, those are all allowed by right in the same districts as massage therapy with the exception of the mixed-use village. So the playing board kind of saw those other types of uses as being allowed by right without their approval and thought the massage therapy could be relative to those categories. And usually for booth rentals, so say if a, a nail salon is allowing a booth to be open for rental or even a hairstylist. Usually they come to the town, apply for a business license, and then that's how we do our zoning review and say, oh, they're in district where that's allowed by right. They have our approval there. For massage therapy, that's not really the case. Each individual therapist does not need to apply for a business license because they're working for an existing business. They just have to have the state licensing in order to practice massage therapy and that's pretty much it. So the, the concerns that you're bringing up are legitimate, I would say so. Uh, the only thing with the special permit that I've noticed is that it's really effective for uses that don't have a licensing factor from the state. So it's kind of the town's protection to make sure there's some mechanism to shut down a business that is operating illicitly or not following the rules. But from the state licensing perspective, anybody can file a complaint with the state licensing board and they can go ahead and do their own investigation, which has happened to other businesses in town. I have heard reports of certain operators who weren't operating with an active license. And then that's usually taken care of about as fast as state can do something like that. So that's kind of the situation now. And I guess the playing board just wanted to find a way to make it so those solo practitioners, that it's just a one-person type of operation, don't have to go through the full burdensome process. So, yeah.
I think in terms of inconvenience, the other two things that come to mind are, it seems like an industry similar to some of the others that you were just mentioning, like, you know, hairdressers and nail salons and stuff, where those kinds of occupations move around across communities a lot. They're not just setting up shop in East Long Meadow for twenty years and
Yeah.
never moving. And so if you have to go through this month or two-month-long process every time you're moving your business, that's pretty challenging, especially since there's also a cost to apply for these special permits in the
Yeah.
the meantime.
It's about.
I could see how inconvenient that could be.
Six hundred and fifty dollars on top of the advertising cost, which is bestowed upon the applicant. So you have the base fee for the permit, two hundred and fifty. And then their minor charge is four hundred dollars for two advertisements that are supposed to be run in the paper per state law. So that's another cost you're throwing on top of licenses that they have to pay for, which is probably gonna go over a thousand dollars for each of these applicants. So that's another thing to consider too. You're making them pay a lot of money.
I have a question.
Sure.
So the only issue I see here is, is if someone's gonna be using a massage therapist business, you know, for something they, for not, yeah. Um, so what is the, the route that you would take if they have a special permit versus if they don't? If they were doing something illicit, like a special permit, we could just pull it, we don't have to have.
You know, that's a good question.
You know, I mean, do you have to go through the same process to get rid of somebody who's
Yes.
not following the rules if they have a special permit or not?
To revoke a special permit, you have to do it through a public hearing, which would delay the process by three to four weeks because you have to advertise it and they have to open the hearing and then vote to revoke the permit. That's just how it is under massage therapy law.
But the difference is, is it's three to four weeks to hold the hearing and all.
Yeah.
Or through the state, you're
Right, but if we.
Months a year for the investigation. Um, typically, by the time it gets to the point of the special permit being revoked, um, usually we've heard from the police department or something that there's. Usually we've heard from the police department or something that there's illicit activity going on. And that we need to do something about it.
And they can't do anything about it if there's illegal.
Goes through courts and all.
Well, we arrested them and they're open for business a couple of days later.
Next day.
You know, the bail situations.
When we had this discussion initially. Someone said that Long Meadow shut theirs right down. How did they do it? Do we know? Someone here on the council mentioned that, that Long Meadow had closed. And were able to settle it right away.
State police came in and raided the place and arrested everyone so that they couldn't operate.
Well, can't we do that here?
So I guess. Yeah, so apparently the, the new regulations went into effect January of twenty seventeen. So there, there's been some updates to that whole process. That seemed to have curtailed this behavior, if you will. And I think that's probably why it got shut down so fast.
Yeah, update and what regulation security? See, may put you on the spot, Tom.
She's looking that up. My concern is that. And again, I just wanted to bring up for a full discussion. But I don't want to. What do I wanna say? Hurt business owners that are doing everything legally, which ninety-nine percent of them are. For the one percent that isn't. It, it's, it's a balancing act. It's tough. Again, in this situation, I'm gonna be truthful. I'm gonna vote to. Recommend repealing this, removing it. And that's more for, I know, individual masseuses, what they have to go through. In the special permit process and the cost of it. And then if they move to another facility to start it. Now they're in another location, they're doing it all over again, and it's frustrating. And I do feel for them, for something that they had nothing to do with, that. It should have never happened to begin with.
Is there a process improvement that we can do upon it? Can that special permit be transferable if they wanted to move? From one location to another without having to.
So. Good question. Special permits usually attach to the land.
Right.
And the only way you can transfer a special permit is if you grant it in another location. You can only transfer an existing permit if it's within the same location, but ownership or the applicant has changed or the business has changed. But if you're going from one place to another in town, you can't really do that. You have to award another special permit in that new location. So essentially, they're forfeiting the old permit to operate in that existing building. And they have to reapply in the new location no matter what.
Definitely governed by state law or is that?
Even if you did an amendment, it's still the whole process. You still have a public hearing and everything. So whether it's an amendment or a new one.
And they're still paying the same cost no matter what, same full cost to the town and to the paper, so.
Do you have a answer?
Uh, the, the, the email I got was from mass.gov, so, I mean. It has, it's just a snippet of the article. Someone from the audience sent to me.
I guess my question is, is it just like on an update on processes for, I'm assuming like due process or like searching. Some sort of angle from.
Yeah, so basically the board eliminated almost all of the exemptions. So almost every practitioner has to obtain or be affiliated with an establishment license.
Okay. Which is true, because every time they got special permits, since I've worked here last May. They got that license after they got the special permit. And they weren't allowed to operate without that establishment license. There was one business that didn't have it, but then as soon as they. Somebody else reported to us, we made sure they got it before they were allowed to continue. And business license applications have been a good way for us to keep track of who's coming in. And opening up in town. And a lot of them recently have been massage therapists over the past year. And that way we were able to keep track of who has what license. And as soon as you get that license, you get our approval to go ahead and open your business.
Any other comments?
Think I've said enough.
There's nothing else. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Motion's been made to close the public hearing. Any other discussion? Done? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Public hearing is now closed. And then is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the amendment to the zoning bylaw relative to massage therapist as presented.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve as presented. Is there any further discussion?
So further discussion, this is owning by law, so this is a.
No, no, super majority.
Oh, yep.
So would be five out of, it'd be five out of the seven then.
Yes. Jim?
No.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
John? The motion passes. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob. Thank you.
Always, always. Thank you, Rebecca.
Next, under our chapter, we have.
Know who I got the email from.
We did, we did.
We have, under financial matters, our first matter is adoption of the Hero Act Local Options. So this was continuing from. Couple of previous meetings that we've had about the topic and.
Point of order, I have to recuse myself from this discussion, because I have a family member that appreciates this benefit. I'll be quiet.
So we had considered this at previous council meetings, the council opted to do until. This evening, once we were further along in the budget process to see what the overall financial situation and health of the town was. We have our director of assessing, Diane here as well. If she'd like to come forward.
Hi, Diane.
Evening.
Hi.
Are any other comments or updates that we should know about?
Not that I'm aware of. I think right now it's in the hands of the town council if. X one and what the percentage of acceptance will be. I have provided all of the information showing. Impact to the budget, but I hope all been worked into the budget, whatever. The town manager and the town council felt it was in the best interest of the overall budget.
Thank you.
Sure, just to elaborate on that, the, the percentage amount that we thought appropriate to add to this budget and this budget. Scenario in this, in the situation we find ourselves in is fifty percent. And it also includes the fifty percent senior abatement as well.
Right, for our seniors.
And so that number. As I put my budget away. Anyway, that's how I prepared this budget. The budget and this portion of it is lies in your hands, but. You know, based on some of the other hardships in this budget process. We thought fifty percent was, was really the most we could go and still provide this benefit to our veterans. And our seniors. So it's sort of a, sort of to use. Ralph's phrase from a couple of minutes ago, this balance, right? This is what the whole budget is, is. We try to get as much to as many people as we can. You know, given the, the climate of, of where we're at. So this, this budget. Like I said, includes a fifty percent for seniors and veterans.
On what we did grant in fiscal twenty-five, if it is at a fifty percent, it would be an additional forty-seven. Thousand one hundred dollars.
For both the veterans and.
And that is naturally on top of the usual amount that budget. And in my conversations with. She felt that we could work that into the budget without any issues.
And so if we went, sorry, through the chair.
Sure.
So if we went with a hundred percent, we're looking at ninety-four thousand two hundred, correct?
And that's based on the people that were granted this year. We have no idea what next year. Or the year after will, will bring, but hopefully we can grow into. Usually you'll pick up new people. Sadly, we drop off a few people, so there's a balance. And the actual exemption amount would go from four hundred to six hundred, is that? Twenty, so if we're talking a twenty-two. I'm sorry, a twenty-two, yeah. Looking at my own, yes, four hundred to six hundred.
And then it, okay.
And that, that would be for just a twenty-two, clause twenty-two, a twenty-two E. Would go from a thousand to fifteen hundred.
And then the senior one, five hundred to seven fifty.
Any thoughts on a particular percentage or overall? Agreement with the local options?
Just very impressed with the spreadsheet.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for putting it all together.
For the highlights.
That's what I'm zoned in on. I know.
So through the chair.
Sure.
So I've been thinking about this. At our last meeting, I had said I thought a fifty percent. Would be the way to start and maybe increase, you know, next year when we could and then, and the more I thought about it. Our seniors, our veterans and all are gonna be hit pretty quickly here with a, a pretty hefty bill. When we had discussed the school and all, that was part of the concerns is elderly. Literally who can't afford a huge increase in their taxes. And obviously the town voted it in, which is great. If school's coming along, wonderful. But I think for. Literally a forty-seven thousand dollar difference. I would be more apt to vote that we do one hundred percent at this time and give them the full amount. And I don't think fifty thousand's a huge difference in our budget. I mean, we've seen a four hundred thousand dollar increase in chapter ninety money right off at the top. I, I would be more apt to say, especially for our veterans and our seniors in town, that. This is something that to me is the least we can do for them. I don't think it's a ton of money and I think that's something we should do.
Any other thoughts?
To the chair, my question would be to Tom. Were we to do that to fund it at one hundred percent, that additional forty-seven thousand? Where will it come from?
Well, from the prior conversation where we sort of rolled the. Savings from RECK and IT back into the levy and the extra money from the state from their iteration of the budget. We would just sort of roll that from that excess levy back into the budget.
What were we rolling in eighty?
Eighty, eighty-eight plus four, but again, that number's not solid yet. We don't know what that number's gonna be, but if we were to do it. In all likelihood, again, like to your point from last time, it, it was probably not gonna change a whole lot more if this is sort of. House and Senate have sort of agreed almost to this number, but. Again, if this was the wish of the council, it would just come out of the, the excess levy, whether we rolled that money in or not.
My thought on it.
I'm sorry, do you wanna go first?
I just had a quick question.
Go for it.
When were these current exemptions set, the months?
I'm sorry, the current ones or the, what we're proposing?
The current ones.
The current ones have been set for years and years. That's been the same dollar amount.
Okay, so they haven't increased.
Not since sometime in. Over twenty years.
Oh, wow.
And the senior exemption has not changed since the exception, which was in nine, eighty-two.
I, I think I, sorry, I know you wanna go, but I, I agree with Ralph that I would like to get to a hundred percent. But I don't know if I wanna take that leap this year. You know, we could do the fifty. Fill it out, how it goes this year, see how it goes this year, maybe take. A second jump next year to a hundred. But if everybody is good with a hundred, I'm good with that too.
No, I share a similar mindset that this is something that the council can and I think has to vote on each year. In our budget and appropriation process, but I think we would ever be hard pressed if we want a hundred percent now to backtrack on it if the financial situation. Takes a negative turn as potentially forecasted next year. I think it's easier to work our way up and have the exemption get better than try to take money away from people. In future years. And I think also morally, I find it hard to. Give a hundred percent, not because the veterans and seniors aren't worthy for that, but, you know, we're also. And cutting may not be the appropriate department is taking a huge hit this year. I think it would. Not be a good faith effort to say that we're gonna give more money to seniors and veterans at the expense of the school department losing twenty. Employees, that doesn't sit right with me.
Yeah, I said a quick question. And the highlighted section under like veterans exemption where it says a hundred percent, eighty thousand, two hundred dollars. Does that incorporate the money that we're already spending on the exemptions or is that a complete increase?
That's in addition to.
That's an addition. So additional we're doing now plus eighty thousand. Gotcha.
Definitely kinda grappling through this when we first heard about it in the budget and it's great to. Get this really great chart to actually see what the. Initially thought maybe it was like a couple hundred thousand dollars, but we're only talking, you know, between forty-seven thousand and ninety-four. I think what people need to realize is, you know, these are helping, it's not like helping all of the seniors, helping like the disproportionately. Seniors that are most in need of it. So there's a lot of, you know, seniors that are in much, or veterans that are in a much better financial situation. And then there's others that aren't. I think, you know, I do definitely understand, obviously, we've had to make some very difficult choices. You know, with education, with other departments, but. You know, we're, we're talking like a forty-seven thousand dollar difference and, you know, I don't. I just think in the grand scheme of things, I think doing it at a hundred, I think, works. I, I don't think it massively changes the budget. And even if, you know, we have some type of significant increase in the future. You know, I don't see it going up so significantly that it really cut into the budget in the next year or two. I mean, I wouldn't be open perhaps to seventy-five, but I think I, I, at this point, I probably prefer a hundred personally.
Sure.
I just have one additional input. When I was here at the last time and our reminder. Publication was here and they did put in the paper all about this. One thing that they forgot to. Insert was that this is for veterans with a ten percent or more disability. And so after the newspaper article came out, many veterans came into our office wanting to know why they haven't been receiving. So just so everyone is aware, this is for veterans with at least a ten percent or more service connected disability. That has been verified through the Veterans Administration.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Always thorough.
There's no other comments. I'll entertain a motion.
Take a motion to accept chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause twenty-two, January, the acts of twenty twenty-four, chapter one seventy-eight, the Hero Act. Which authorizes an increase in the amount of exemption granted under general laws, chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause twenty-two, twenty-two eighth. Twenty-two B, twenty-two C, twenty-two E and twenty-two F. By one hundred percent of the personal exemption amount subject to the conditions of clause twenty-two J. To be effective for the applicable exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or July, on or after July first, twenty twenty-five.
Second, motion's been made. Is there any further discussion? I don't think we have to, but for safety, I'll do this as a roll call since it's financially related. Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a no, Maryland. Ralph?
Yes.
And John? Thank you. Is there another motion?
Make a motion to accept chapter fifty-nine, section five, clause forty-one C, under the Acts of two thousand and two in chapter one eighty-four, section fifty-one, which authorizes an increase in the amount of exemption granted under general laws, chapter fifty-nine, section F, clause forty-one C, by one hundred percent of the personal exemption amount beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, for FY twenty twenty-six.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a no. Stating Ralph?
Yes.
And John?
I guess.
Thank you. The motion passes. Thank you, Diane. We, Diane?
Thank you.
Next, under financial matters, we have releasing money to the sewer vehicle reserve to retained earnings. Um, which might providing a brief overview of.
Yeah, so this is sort of just tidying up. Uh, somebody made a thing before when we were talking about the fuel and the ambulance fund, the these, at some point, uh, these, uh, sub, we'll call them sub account, uh, object IDs were added to make sure that the sewer department and the water department kept up with their fleet. And that's why it was earmarked just for vehicles. Uh, as I understand it, we're just putting this back into the retained earnings, which is where everything comes out of anyway. Uh, so we're just putting it back into the savings account for the respective departments where it should be. We were trying to spend it all last year on the vehicles and then didn't, didn't, couldn't get to that number because water had something like four hundred thousand dollars in this vehicle. So at this point, we can spend this money on whatever the water department could need, not just the vehicle, right? So that we don't need to make this distinction anymore, uh, in the water and the sewer department. So the money's just going back into retained earnings, which sewer vehicle reserve fund is part of. Sort of semantics, but it cleans everything up.
Any questions?
Through the chair. Didn't we already vote on this?
No.
This this was brought up once before.
So we we talked about it during the budget season last year because.
I thought we voted on it.
Uh, it'd be the first time Kim was wrong, but.
Well, that's okay, whether or not.
No, I don't believe, uh, I don't believe we've done this. And this was why when we when we had the reserve fund sheet on the budget.
Right.
We were saying that we were going to vote that amount into the reserves, like it was listed as one of the votes in the reserve fund. I don't believe that's taken place, but we can check.
Um, the second thing is, I just, I I know in the past we had put like twenty-five thousand dollars into, um, vehicle fund, fifty thousand.
Yep.
To get it up this high. It must have been years without taking any money out of this.
Uh, so nobody, uh,
Realized that.
Any of Kim's predecessors had realized that there was this separate account to buy vehicles out of in that account.
Okay.
And so we're just sort of taking the ambiguity out of it and just here's the retained earnings account and we'll work from there.
Any other questions? If there's none, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
Go ahead, I'll get the second one.
Thirty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents of sewer vehicle reserves to retained earnings.
Second, questions been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
So to, um, should the motion say to, uh, sewer retained earnings? Or retained earnings of the sewer fund?
Sure.
I'm just saying, just clarification.
Yep.
No, Kim likes clarified.
Yeah, if you want to amend.
I amend my motion. I make a motion.
I'll still second it.
Should I restate it?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I amended to the retain, uh, the sewer retained earnings fund.
And Jim was good with the. Yep. Okay. No other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And a motion for water vehicle reserve.
I make a motion to release two hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and sixty cents of water vehicle reserves to water retained earnings.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes.
Curious if the motion's that simple, if you wanted to move it from water into sewer. I bet we'd have a longer conversation.
Yeah.
They know the D E P would have some questions.
Thankfully, we didn't need to. Okay, next on our agenda is transfer of overlays from overlay surplus for FY twenty-five taxes for three eighty-two North Main Street. Dan's on.
This one's, uh, I think we've been talking about the taxes, uh, at three eighty-two North Main with either an attorney or, uh, somebody at the state since, uh, the taking was final. Uh, so naturally, all of our town owned property is exempt from paying taxes. However, the building was on the roll and in the budget for this year. Therefore, the revenue for the entire privately owned building was budgeted for. After we took the building, the only exemption or the only thing you can't do to exempt your taxes is if you receive the property by eminent domain, which obviously we did. So we had to go through this process. Uh, I believe there's a letter attached from the Board of Assessors. Um, do you want, do you want to, Diane, do you want to explain a little bit about the process? I don't think there was much to it other than, uh, Diane did more work than I did, so I'll let her say if there was a lot of work involved or not.
We had two processes we could have done. And when I heard the first process, I looked for an easier which is the direction we went to. And we do have the blessing of, um, the attorneys at D L S Law. They said we could do it either way we wanted to. We could have gone an eight of fifty-eight, which would have had to have the commissioner of revenue give the assessors authority to abate the taxes and this money would come from our overlay account. Or assessors could review their overlay account and determine if there is a surplus that they do not need to use. And we could then release this surplus to the town and it can be used for any lawful purpose before June thirtieth. And we decided to go in that direction. Uh, D S L Law has these awesome Tuesday, Wednesday from ten to twelve. You zoom in and you get to talk to one of the attorneys on the spot, you get in their waiting room. And he said that he had already spoke to our town attorney and he thought that this was the easiest way. So I go for easy any I can. And so the Board of Assessors did release the exact dollar amount that we need for the taxes. Um, just so the town council is aware that we had one point two million in the overlay reserve account. And this will bring us down to one point little on, a little over one point one million. And, uh, so we have no issues releasing that. And we're looking for the town council to take the overlay surplus and I believe we're applying it to maybe Kim, if Kim is still here, or Tom. I believe it's going to be applied to the three eighty-two North Main Street account for expenses so we can pay the the town our taxes that we owe.
Bring it back to ourselves?
Yes.
Be accounting at its finest.
Moving the same pennies around to ourselves.
With that said, um, that's where we stand with, um.
Thank you, Diane.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Nobody better.
If anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer. If not, I'm happy to go home.
Are there any questions for Diane? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, Diane.
Thanks, Diane.
Move to appropriate the overlay surplus amount of seventy-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and seven cents. The purpose of reconciling the tax balance associated with the town state with a property known as three eighty-two North Main Street, where five hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents is to be paid to the former owner as the excess of the estimated amount of taxes paid by the former owner, taxpayer, or the actual taxes attributed to the pre-taking period from July first, twenty twenty-four to October tenth, twenty twenty-four, and where seventy-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and eight cents will be applied for the purpose of offsetting the taxes assessed to the former owner and attribute the post-taking period from October eleventh, twenty twenty-four, when the town took ownership to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, the end of the fiscal year.
Second.
Questions been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Diane.
Next, we have reappropriation of funds for the Chestnut Street pump station.
Thank you.
One more.
Oh, hey.
How the pump station?
Seem to have one of these good financial matters overtaking. Um, excuse me, so, uh, a couple of things here. Um, this is a chance for us to use some of our previously bonded money from the water department to pay for current projects. One of which is the pump station, which we received an almost two million dollar grant, uh, from the state. Bids on that one came back more than we thought. And then the Water Main project that was in the, in the capital, um, plan last year, uh, came back less than we thought. So you've authorized the borrowing of projects that, uh, this one has an excess of and this one has, uh, is deficient. Plus, we have some leftover money in these funds that are funds that are unused. So basically, again, sort of another accounting move to allow us to sign these contracts to get these projects going, uh, in terms of dollar amounts of the contracts. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And then the, the, the monies that are left over are sort of listed here in the spreadsheet for which projects they were and what's left over. So we just want to, we had this conversation about the, um, the modular building last year. We have a bit of money left over and some bonding from another school project, which we can use for that. Same thing. We have some money left over in water projects that we can only use for water projects. And so now we're at this point where we can, uh, use that money that's already being bonded and paid for and reallocate some appropriated or or, uh, approved bonding for the two projects that came in, uh, a little different than we thought when we estimated.
Questions?
Ralph? Yes. So what's the cost of Chestnut Street pump station going to be? I mean, I know we allocated money to start.
Yep.
Before we got the grant.
Yep.
When we got the grant.
Yep.
And now we're being told that neither of those is enough and that three hundred and seventy-six thousand additional in here is not going to be enough. And that we want to, um, attach it to the one point eight million dollar, um, bond for the Water Main. So I guess my question comes in is how much is Chestnut Street actually costing?
So I think the final number was something like three point three of which there was, uh, am I getting these numbers right, Kim? Are you there still? Uh, we needed an additional eight hundred thousand for Chestnut, which we had two plus, uh, five hundred. Is Kim there? Oh, Jamie's not there. Jamie's not there, let her in.
Like, Kim's there, but.
Yes, Ralph, hold on one second because we went through this a bunch of times, uh, when we opened the bids for the pump station, uh, which was far more than we had thought. And, uh, there was a there was, um, some miscommunication between Bruce and Time Bond about what we had allocated in the first place and what the actual cost was going to be after we did that redesign, the hundred percent design. Um, Kim, you there? Sorry.
I am. Uh, sorry, I was having a hard time getting in. Um, so I don't have the numbers sitting in front of me, but one thing I want to let you know is that we had approved, I think it was two point, I don't know, two point two million or something like that. We had, um, authorized to borrow that for that project. We didn't borrow it all because we had the grant coming through. So we've only borrowed, I want to say about, uh, it might be like eight hundred thousand on that Chestnut project. Plus, we're using the grant funds, but there, we did need a little bit of extra money. Um, I think it was about seven hundred thousand in order to complete the project. And we didn't want to go out and borrow it because we already had fun, although we're authorized to borrow. We didn't want to go out and borrow in the middle of the year because we usually borrow in December. So what we chose to do was use the three hundred and seventy-five thousand, um, from the old bonds that we're already paying on for old projects that we don't need. And then we were going to use some funds from that additional project that we had already borrowed one point eight million for, but that came in lower. So when everything's said and done and all of the bonding goes to permanent bonding in December, everything will get reconciled out, but we won't borrow as much as we authorized to begin with.
Okay, so, um, the, the, here's the, the dollar amounts, Ralph, sorry. So we got the one point nine seven five for the bond, right?
That we authorized.
For the Chestnut Station.
That, the grant, the one stop grant.
Yes, it was.
Had it come through.
Yep.
We authorized, hey, we can bond if the grant doesn't come through.
Right.
But the grant came through.
Correct.
So we shouldn't bond with anything.
So the project is worth more than one point nine seven five.
Okay.
Okay. And so that, uh, the three seventy-six, four ninety-three, ninety-nine for the water bonds. And then five hundred and eighteen thousand, six eighty. So we needed like an additional almost nine hundred thousand. So the cost of the pump station is now going to be two point seven. Does that make sense? And because we had borrowed or you allowed us to attempt to borrow.
Sorry, we paid for the engineering of it.
Right.
Upfront, so.
This is part of it. So the engineering, a lot of it is happening while the project's happening. So Time Bond's contract is in in that eight hundred thousand on top of the grant.
So this project's a lot more than what we.
Well, it's a three million dollar project that we're paying, uh, at nine hundred thousand.
And so with that, then, obviously.
Minus the three that we've already borrowed.
For Worthy, Garland, Niagara.
Yep.
Has that project already been completed?
No. So we opened bids. This is where, this is where it all kind of happened at the same time. We opened bids for that considerably under one point eight, like to the tune of like eight or nine hundred thousand dollars. So we had this whole other, almost exact amount of money that the other project was over, right? So the actual numbers are the same. We just had them in different places and luckily this one was over and this one was under.
But this one hasn't gone out for bonding yet because we just got the price.
Just got the price. But it's been authorized and banned, so we can sign the contract and go. Of that sound.
Are you asking me?
No.
So I guess my point to make this a lot easier in the future is if we can get some of this background information, like what Chestnut Street would have cost and why we're asking for a million dollars more because we've already approved some, we bonded some, and now all of a sudden, hey, it's not enough. And hey, it's not enough. And, um, it just, when's, when's all of those stop, I guess? Um, and I think this comes down to some other projects way in the past that again, three hundred thousand dollars is going to cover the project. Two years later, we need another two hundred and fifty thousand. Two years later, hey, we're three hundred thousand more and we're going to be done. It's like, wait a minute, it's always three hundred thousand to begin with. I guess that's the whole.
No, and and quite frankly.
Do I understand when you open up bids, it's completely different. You're guestimating what it's going to be based on the information from Time Bond and, how much do we pay Time Bond to guestimate this? Can we take it out of theirs?
Yeah.
I mean, that's off quite a bit.
No, and and part of that.
Five percent that they're off.
Well, we, the town needs to take. Well, we, the town needs to take some blame here. We 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 had some uh miscommunication in a lost document in which the amount that went into the capital plan was under what Time Bond had revised their number to. Okay, so a chunk of that.
More sense.
Okay, uh, well, I don't wanna.
Yeah.
I don't wanna take blame because we deserve to take some of the blame for this chunk of money that we didn't put enough in the capital plan for the project. Cause we had this grant and we thought we had enough.
Yeah.
That that construction amount changed by about five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars. And Time Bond notified us and we neglected to to update the number in the project amount. Okay, so that's most of that. It wasn't, it wasn't a, you know, they got it wrong. We missed a step. There was the the estimate that we've had for a year and a half and it changed. And we neglected to update that number in the request for capital.
Okay.
And so, yes.
Other than that, I've got nothing.
Yeah, no, and I I understand that that this probably could have been clearer in paper form slash email form. Uh, and I just assumed that I could clear that all up here, uh, but we can, we can do better next time with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Not all entertain a motion.
Or not.
I'll try. I move that the town appropriates three hundred and seventy six thousand, four hundred and ninety three dollars and ninety nine cents to pay additional costs of the Chestnut Pump Station project. And that to meet this appropriation, said amount shall be transferred from the following balances of amounts borrowed for various projects that have been completed and that haven't completed and for which no financial liability remains as authorized by General Laws, Chapter forty four, Section twenty. Water account three, three, two, six, four, five, oh, five, eighty five C, water bond, Main Maple Street. Sixteen years, sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty three dollars and sixty nine cents.
Sixty.
Sixty cents. I'm such, oh, I'm sorry. Let me repeat that. Sixty thousand, six hundred and forty three dollars and sixty nine cents. Water, um, account three, three, six, five, four, five, oh, five, eight, five, five, oh, two. Water bond, Maple Street, Water Service, fifteen years. Two hundred and sixty five thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy six cents. Water, account three, three, six, six, four, five, oh, five, eight, five, five, zero, two. Water bond, Prospect Tank Paint, ten years, fifty thousand, one hundred and four dollars and thirty four cents. Water, account three, three, eight, six, four, five, oh, five, eight, five, C. Water bond, water meter mod, one to five, ten years, a hundred and thirty dollars and twenty cents.
Um, just, I'm sorry, that's uh fifty eight, fifty.
Where?
Sorry, not five, eight, five, C.
First and the fourth.
Sorry.
Kinda cut off.
I'm sorry, that's cut off, Marilyn.
Five, eight, five, C?
It's zero, sorry.
Okay, you want me to repeat that? All right, okay, the amount's the same, though. Okay, do I do this one too?
Yeah.
Okay.
We wanna do them both separate?
Yeah, well, we can do them.
I'm gonna second that motion.
Okay.
Okay, motion's been made in seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Then the second part.
I move that the loan order adopted by the Town Council on May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four, which authorized the borrowing of one million, eight hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred dollars to pay costs of replacing three thousand, six hundred and fifty feet of water mains in the Worthy, Garland, Niagara, Kingman, Birch and Donald Avenue areas is hereby amended so that the funds authorized to be borrowed pursuant thereto can also be expended to pay additional costs of the Chestnut Pump Station. Second.
Just for clarification, it's one million, eight hundred and thirty seven thousand, five hundred, correct?
Correct.
Not what I said?
I wasn't sure.
I think you said, but I, yeah. It's a lot of words.
Point, so.
That's what I heard, but okay.
And 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 a second.
Motion's made in seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. The next under financial matters, we have accepting a one thousand dollar donation from the Leahy family uh per Massachusetts general law.
I make a motion to accept a donation to the Recreation Department of a thousand dollars from the Leahy family per Massachusetts general law, Chapter forty four, Section fifty three, A.
Made in seconded. The only discussion I have uh is thank you to them.
So.
Any other discussion? Say none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, the motion passes. We have approval of minutes. We have our April twenty second open session minutes.
I make a motion to approve the April twenty second, twenty twenty five open session minutes. Say something.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. And we have approving the April sixteenth, twenty fourth and thirtieth special town council minutes.
I move to approve the April sixteen, twenty four and thirty, twenty twenty five Special Town Council slash Financial Oversight Committee meeting minutes.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, John. Motion passes. Hey, under old business, we have an update on the citizens petition for recreational marijuana. Genie, would you mind providing an overview on that process?
Sure. Uh, there was a petition about forth Christina Brooks to. All right.
Oh, that's okay.
To allow recreational marijuana facilities in town. And they did have the correct amount of uh verified order signatures on the petition. The next step per the charter was to send it to the town attorney for review. And he had to um deem it in proper order, proper form to move it along in the process. But the opinion letter, which you all have a copy of, I believe Christina, you have a Christie of copy of it too.
I have it at home. I didn't bring it with me, but.
Okay. Seemed it wasn't in proper form, so it could not be moved along any further.
Great, thank you for the update. Then I think as such, it seems to have since been corrected, but of course, that's too late since we already have the ballot in flight for our June.
Right, and I believe it would have to get the same amount of signatures too to be resubmitted to us.
Oh, now that it's been corrected, right?
Different petition now. I don't know what the conversations were between our town attorney and Tom and and he spoke with you too, so.
Yeah, I have a couple of of updates for that. So um, under our petition, um, there was, they were saying there was a social equity component that had to be added. We were kinda both unsure between the town, the attorney, our attorney. Um, so we did get uh the bylaw model um in ordinance template from the CCC. And what they're asking, they have three different formats that could be adopted. Um, we did put it into it, so we edited uh six D to authorize marijuana establishments in the town to be uh have social equity applicants for the first three years. After that, the opportunity to be available for non-social equity applicants. And the same thing goes with marijuana uh retailers. So that has been um added onto there now. It's decision of if you guys would like to follow the process of doing another uh petition and then following that. Or now that it is in the form that it can be adopted, you know, having a town meeting and seeing if you want to approve it that way. Um, you know, our attorney has let us know now it isn't in form, it can be adopted by the council. Does not necessarily have to go to a vote. If you want to, we can follow the petition process again and, you know, go to the same voters. Um, have them do that and then have them follow up with another fifty.
From my perspective and certainly open to any other thoughts, I think it's still worthy of it going through the voters and validating that they're still good with this, even though the language hasn't changed all that much. But just the general change of it being prohibited to be permissible.
Right, I would support that. Agreed.
So there's just a procedural question. If they went forward with their signatures, would it then the next available opportunity not be until next?
That's my understanding.
Or would there be like something before that?
I believe the charter says the next regularly scheduled election. Is that your understanding? So it'd be next year?
Yes.
Yep.
That's why the charter reads currently.
But we have this more than front of us that, you know, we could have another conversation about that. You brought, you always bring up the good points, Ralph. I I am gonna say that, so.
So so I'm just curious on procedural. From uh the letter, it sounds like um they could go forwards with just a bylaw amendment. And not go to the voters. So procedurally, they petition the council to have a bylaw change. And then depending on if we're up or down, then they can get additional signatures to appeal that. Is that how that works?
And I think that's why uh they're asking your opinion now because if they, if you don't think, for instance, that it needed to go to the ballot, then we would just go the bylaw route. But if you still think it needs to go to ballot, then it's gotta stick with the petition.
Initiative petition, yeah.
I did look at the, so the actual ballot question when it came to Esol Meadow, two thousand and sixteen. Cause I was just wondering what it looked like for the town. Like, was it a landslide? Was it a not? Not, was it fairly close? And it looks fairly close to me. There was about forty five percent of the town at that time before recreational was actually high, where it was just approved, had said, yes, they wanted to move forward. There was about two percent that were blank votes, so they were either, you know, could be either way. And then about fifty three percent of the town said no. That was almost uh ten years ago. So there's been a lot of, you know, change, I think, growth. So it's interesting. We just wanted to know where you guys' guidance was for us now moving forward.
The legalization statewide, the town vote.
Yeah.
Yes.
It does seem interesting to me that if our guidance from our attorney originally was that it needed to go as a valid question, that now it doesn't technically have to.
Say, Mr. O'Shea.
Yeah, it's confusing to say the least.
Well, it is, cause I think there's parameters around it, depending on how many facilities uh you'd be allowing and this and that. So just to say automatically, oh, it's gotta go to a ballot or not, I think. You have to look at how the adoption would be and.
I think it's been a learning process for the town in general. I mean, it was really interesting for us to go out and get signatures, like, you know, we were in the center, we went to people's homes. You know, we went to people's businesses that asked, you know, to come in and learn more. And it was different from what the, I think, people expected. Like, these were veterans, they were parents, they were soccer moms, they were your construction workers. You know, people that were really interested in, you know, bringing revenue to the town and also providing accessible. Or they don't have to drive fifteen, twenty minutes away, just like, you know, if you were going to, you know, buy some medication or something at a pharmacy, you know, and you're not feeling well, you wouldn't wanna drive fifteen, twenty minutes away. Um, if you were buying something at the grocery store, we usually buy per convenience, right? What's close by unless you have a favorite store you wanna go to. So I think that knowing all the things that were going on in the town, they're looking for maybe a a safe way to get some extra, you know, revenue that's now been proven. You know, our forecast is, you know, what we see is at least bringing around three hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars a year for tax revenue based on, you know, trends and forecasting, that could be more or less. So we, you know, we're willing to put in the work. If it has to go into a ballot next year, it'll give us more time to educate people. But if it is something that, you know, you guys are interested and the attorney clears it, then you have different guidance, you know, we are open to that as well.
And we live here, so we'd love to contribute, save some of those tax dollars that. So much. Lift some of that heavy load that we were talking about, Ralph, from the school.
Well, we've got lacrosse and basketball and surely, so we feel all the pains a growing family and a growing community, for sure.
We just wanna be here and help support it. Got next fifteen years here with kids in schools. We wanna make sure that taxes stay where they're supposed to be.
If it's my understanding correctly, we went to town meeting first. Town meeting said no, which then brought us to the ballot and the town said no. Um, I appreciate all the hard work that you've gone to and the people that you've spoken to. We're all here because we were on the ballot.
Yeah.
And I feel that um to make it cleaner than to just suddenly say, okay, we wanna change the bylaw that our community voted no on, I really feel we still have to go to a ballot. And I know that personally, I know that means more more work for you. I'm sorry, but you're gonna end up setting up a business and profiting from this and that's that's understood. But I feel that the town really has a right to weigh in on this.
Correct.
And, you know, we'll see how it goes. And all those people that you've spoken to, hopefully they would support it and.
Oh, we let them know you're supporting. You gotta come out to vote too. That's uh, that's the important part at the end of it. You know, it's not just the petition, it's the actual getting out to vote that is the important part.
I I watch, I mean, I read social media too. I know what people are saying and for every two people that said, yeah, we want it, there was another person who said, no, we didn't want it. And I, you know, that's not really a valid comparison. However, I know that there are folks out there that do not wanna see their town go in this direction. So that would be my opinion. Like or not. I said that to God.
So through the chair, I would, I would agree with you, Marilyn. I would like the voter to hear from the voters because um, they were the ones that spoke to begin with. Um, I I guess my question is, and I'm just thinking out loud, when it goes to the voters, are we asking the voters whether or not they wanna allow sale of recreational marijuana in our town? Or are we asking them to approve a specific bylaw that's being presented?
How is the original question written? And I don't have that in front of me.
Yeah, so we never got to that point because there was no question on the ballot because we had sort of gotten past that point where Genie had to hit send on the mailing. And that's a great question because I would assume that a ballot vote can't create a bylaw based on our charter.
And that's, that's my thought is.
So.
Does the town wanna allow recreational marijuana uh sale in town? Yes, no?
Ralph, wasn't it when, when the ballot vote occurred, then the town was then instructed to create the bylaw? Weren't the bylaws created after the vote?
Yes.
There was a certain amount of time where they had to, like, I think the state, state legalized marijuana in twenty sixteen. Then I think communities had like a year or two to decide basically, are you going to allow the sale of it or not? And we, somebody, you know, put together the ballot question and then we decided not as a community.
Uh, so the reason, sorry, John, the reason for my question is um whether or not the council should set up going forward a ballot question and say, do you wanna allow recreational marijuana, yes or no? And then if the town comes back and says yes, then the bylaw process can start.
Yeah.
Um, instead of having them go out and try and get five hundred signatures or whatever it is.
Which was the the original um thought process when you first came forward was, if you didn't wanna go, if you wanted to decide that you didn't wanna go back to the ballot and you thought it was a good one, you could have just said yes and and write that. But from the get go, it was like, this was a ballot question, it should go back to the ballot. And that's why this process has turned out like it has. I'm just thinking as we're saying this out loud for the next citizen petition. And I'll I'll say, and I'm sure I can speak for our attorney and and Genie, you've been outstanding citizen petitioners. But I mean, like helping us, you've been helping each other through the process here. It's been difficult. Uh, there is, your attorneys had a a certain thought process and so has ours. And so we're working through this issue. But I think as we go through this, it's really up to you first to say, yeah, this should go to the ballot. Then we're into this thing. So I think there was an avenue where if that's, this was never a ballot question, it was just an idea. You could have voted on it and then we would have went to the bylaw process. But I don't think at any either avenue, the bylaw process does not get circumvented. You you need to go through the bylaw process regardless of how the ballot shakes out. Or if it even went, or your vote shake that shook out.
And I would also add too, I mean, I do appreciate the amount of hard work that you guys have done and I don't think any of us intend to or
No.
Made it wanna seem like it was entirely complicated. I think truthfully, this, at least as far as my tenure on the. my tenure on the council, the first time we've ever had to go through this sort of petition process.
Constantly trying to achieve.
Definitely a learning experience for all of us in terms of how it all worked and how to follow everything appropriately.
Um, I was wondering if, if the council saw fit to just state, you know, that we wanna see this as a ballot question on the next, uh, on the next, um, official town election. Do they need signatures? Or can the council just say?
I think the council can just say, but since we've got time, I'd rather look into it and get back to you on that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, Jeannie.
I'd, I'd rather take time and look into it and get back to you on that.
No, that's fine, but I just thought I.
I believe so, to get a ballot question on the ballot initiated by the council, it would just, your vote and the language.
So that could be something we could follow up with you too after some.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Potentially, if the council was agreeable to it, we could initiate putting it on the ballot, so you don't have to go through extra work. It's just, of course, waiting until the next, next year's election.
Just a quick question there, just to make sure I have that correct, what you were saying there, Tom. So then, you know, we have about, if we get put on the ballot, just a straightforward question, does the town, will the town accept recreational cannabis being sold? You know, yes or no? From that point on, there wouldn't be any more petitioning. There would be just coming to the town and waiting for you to propose a new bylaw. That you work, right? And then that would be added into the charter. And then from there, that point on, then we would go through licensing and so on and so forth.
This is why the.
The new business.
This is why the first part of that has the attorney say, this is in the proper format to be a bylaw. So that we can just shove it in the bylaws.
Got it.
It has to go through the hearing and the whole process, but that's why it has to be in that form, so that we can just add it to our bylaws. If in fact, it was approved.
Understood. Okay. Thank you for the clarification there. I appreciate you.
Thank you for your patience.
We appreciate you guys working with us. It's, it's a learning curve for all of us right at the end of the day. And we know that this town has never had anything like this before and we've saved. So, with that being the case, we're thankful to just have the opportunity and, uh, be able to, uh, work with you guys as closely as you guys have been able to work with us to make this happen. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Let us know what the next step is and we'll prepare for whatever we could.
Got twelve months, let's make it happen.
Six or eight months.
Yes, that's right. We need all the.
Have a good one.
You too, thanks.
Next, we had under old business, the town manager evaluation results. So prior to this meeting, the, all counselors had submitted to me their individual evaluation of Tom. And then last week, the subcommittee, the performance evaluation subcommittee met.
Were rudely interrupted by the manager mid screen. Sorry about that.
Where's the big bug?
To discuss them and kind of put together the overall averages for each of the categories and kind of reconcile all of the different goals that individual counselors had put together to see what was the most common themes across all of them. So just sort of quickly running through each of the categories, there were ten categories that the town managed, same ones as previous years uh, were scored against. So the first individual characteristics, the average was an eight out of ten. Uh, professional skills and status was eight out of ten. Relations with elected members of the governing body was seven out of ten. Policy execution was eight out of ten. Reporting was seven out of ten. Citizen relations was eight out of ten. Staffing was seven out of ten. Supervision was eight out of ten. Fiscal management was nine out of ten and community was eight out of ten. So that gave an overall average of about seventy-eight out of a hundred, if you add it up that way, which raw was a very good score for only been in the role for a second year or so. It seems like the individual, I guess for the benefit of the public, which these will be available as well. In addition to those categories, there were polls that counselors could provide up to three to four of them and then just, uh, open text additional comments if anyone had additional feedback to provide or potentially explain why they maybe gave a certain score in any of those categories. Again, based on the numbers, the counselor's overall feeling was that Tom did a good and met standard job in each of the different categories. I think the only area that stuck out in terms of desiring improvement was just aspects on communication, which happened to be our number one proposed goal. Um, two other goals, completing the building and space study. Um, and potentially the road improvement plan, just kinda carrying over the goals from the current year. And then uh, the third proposed goal, something with the center town district somewhat open-ended, uh, because each counselor had a different interpretation of where they maybe wanted to see that, but just sort of broadly speaking, having some plan that we could action upon and start discussions relating to bylaws or changes in the town and overall direction and planning. If I missed anything, certainly speak up, but I think that was the general consensus of everyone. But I think we were overall happy with the job you've been doing and the town certainly seems to be heading in a pretty well direction. And even though we've had a challenging upcoming FY twenty-six budget, I think we all recognize that the town under both your leadership and the people that you've hired and work with underneath you have kept the town in a very good financial situation and position moving forward. Thank you.
It's been a pleasure. Appreciate, uh, I appreciate the feedback, obviously. Uh, most importantly, I want to continue to get better. Um, I know this is, uh, I hope I was better than last year and I hope to be better next year. And that's, uh, that's sort of the, the goal moving forward, but I, I do appreciate, um, this group. Uh, you're part of the team too. Um, and I think, uh, if there's praise to go around that, that you deserve a lot of it. I think, uh, if we're headed in the right direction, it's because we're working together. Um, and so praise to you too, and, and thank you for, again, all the input, I, every little comment. Uh, you may think I don't read, but I do. Um, and I give it credence. Um, and try to make adjustments where I can. So, uh, I appreciate everything. Um, I appreciate the opportunity and I, again, love my job, job and I love being here and I love this town, so. Um, you know, thanks.
Thank you, Tom. If there's no other comments, I would see if it was acceptable for the, the council, I think similar in prior years, um, the council president had met with the town manager to make sure that the goals the council had proposed were mutually agreeable for the town manager's contract. Is any other, you know, discussion around the evaluations that were completed, if that's agreeable to everyone?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Great, we will do that next time we meet.
All right.
Any other discussion on evaluation? Okay, seeing none. Uh, new business, action items. Uh, our next meeting, we will have the continuation of our budget public hearing, at which point we'll approve and appropriate the budget. We will potentially have something relating to town manager contract as it comes out of our executive session this evening. Um, let me look at our calendar. I'm sure we've got other stuff. Let's see, May, perhaps not. It's mostly budget public here as scheduled at the moment.
And we'll have all those motions to you as soon as we can, so that, um, just maybe a little bit longer to look at than, than normal, so everybody can practice their.
Absolutely. Okay, if there's nothing else, we will move to executive session. So I will make a motion to move into executive session. To construct static, strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with the town manager, Tom Christensen. And return to open session for the sole purpose of adjournment. This is a roll call vote to enter executive session. Jim, Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And the S, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
We're in executive session. Thank you.